We move on to item two, which is apologies. We have an apology from councillor Wilson and one from councillor Gary for lateness, which was unnecessary, but thanks for sending that through. I'll move that the apology be accepted, seconded councillor Benson-Pope. Any discussion? Those in favour?
Aye.
Those against? That is carried. Confirmation of the agenda, and I will note that items nine through 11, which are part B items, the recommendations as per the order paper are to approve items that this committee doesn't have the delegated authority to approve. So as they come through, there will be recommendations that council approve that will be subsequently signed off at the council meeting on the 31st of October. So just noting that. And that in regard to standing order 2.1, option C be adopted in relation to moving and seconding and speaking to amendments. I'll move seconded councillor Staines. Any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour?
Aye.
Those against? That is carried. Thank you. Declaration of interest. Nobody's registered any new companies over the weekend. No amendments to make? No, in which case I'll move that we note the elected members' interests register as attached and confirm the proposed management plan for elected members' interests. Seconded councillor Lofisal. Any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour?
Aye.
Those against? That is carried. Part A reports. Welcome Dr Griffin to speak to his quarterly report for the Otago Museum. Oh, I haven't, oh, my apologies, sorry. I mean, do come, this won't take long. I need to move the minutes of the Toito Otago Settlers Museum for 20th of September 2017, that the committee note Part A items in public forum at the minutes of that meeting. I'll move that, seconded councillor Alder. Any discussion? All those in favour?
Aye.
Those against? That is carried. Part A reports, the Otago Museum quarterly report, Dr Griffin. Fantastic to have astronomy on the news headlines this morning.
Yes, Kia ora, tato. 130 million years ago, two neutron stars collided and the messages were received by Earth back in August. And what's really cool is that there's a link to Otago. You may not appreciate that when those neutron stars spiraled together and flashed and were detected by the LIGO Laser Interferent Tric Gravitational Observatory, they were creating gold. So the gold in our goldfields, that the wealth of this city had built upon, was created in a similar explosion before the Earth was formed. So there you go, a little bit of astronomy. I do apologise for that, but it's a great day. And I'm only enthusiastic about this because we've just been programming a sequence into the planetarium for shows this afternoon, hopefully, that illustrate this cool thing that's happened. So it's great to be here. And can I publicly recognise and acknowledge my colleagues from the cultural sector, Jennifer and Cam? We don't often get a chance to kind of come together publicly, and I'd just like to recognise the tremendous work that I think both of them are doing. And I hope the councillors acknowledge, and this isn't blowing our own trumpet, but I think the cultural sector here, in terms of our museums and galleries, is really punching above its weight. And there's some really cool things going on. I was at the opening at Toito of the exhibition about World War One and the Belgians a few weeks ago. It's just splendid stuff, and I know Cam's doing some super stuff. So forgive me, I just, it's great to see everybody in the same room. I've tabled the report. It covers a period when we've just closed our Discovery World and Tropical Forest Science Centre for Redevelopment. We're right in the middle of that process now. In fact, yesterday, a team of four Germans arrived after a 40-hour flight, and they're presently starting to unwrap the new interactive exhibits that were commissioned from Germany. And we're putting down the carpet. We've installed an infinity room, which if you've been to the Omuru Steampanne Museum, you've probably seen one of these things. Well, we've got one in our new science centre. So we're rocking and rolling, and we're on schedule for an opening in December, on the 1st of December, all being well. So while we've been closed and not been able to, we're working very hard behind the scenes to create what we think will be a tremendous facility for not just Dunedin but for the whole of South Island. And when you consider that between the planetarium and the Discovery World redevelopment, that's about $3.5 million worth of investment. So it's a significant investment on the part of the museum into science education facilities, and I'm particularly proud of that. The report covers a period when there was a lot of activity. And the museum's been very successful in obtaining grants to do outreach across not just Otago but as far afield as the Chatham Islands. And that gives us an opportunity to spread the message about what a great place Dunedin and Otago is to places that don't normally get science outreach, and that was quite an interesting thing. We've done a lot of work around the museum behind the scenes. The Permian Monsters exhibition that is open now for about four weeks has been running very well, and attendance is, even though our prime attraction is shut, we're matching the attendances from last year, so we're very pleased about that. Looking forward, the opening of Discovery World, we hope we'll get national publicity and possibly international publicity, really raise the profile of the museum, and we look forward to having something open in terms, for the summer season, that brings a lot of people into this city and hopefully gets them really excited about what we're doing. I don't want to go into too much detail in the report, it's a report, if you've got any questions on that, I'm very happy to answer them. But once again, thank you for your support of the museum, we really appreciate the council support that we get. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr Griffin. Questions councillor Vandivis?
On the 27 exhibits that you're unpacking at the moment, are they all interactive hands-on or most of them?
Yes, and actually, the reason we went to the company outside of New Zealand for those exhibits is that there's not a company in New Zealand that could do it. And we went through a tender process and Huttenger, which is one of the world's best interactive companies, came up with the best price, and all of them are interactive. And in fact, I was, they were unpacking one today, one of my favourites, there's several really good ones, but there's two bikes, one of which has a skeleton on it, and as you cycle, you can see how the skeleton matches your actions. So it illustrates how the human body works. All of the, I think we're going to raise our game with these interactives. I'm seriously impressed by what I've seen. And on top of those 27, there's about another 10 interactives that we're building locally. And one of the, we think it will be the highlight of the exhibition is a New Zealand-built, six-metre-tall slide, which is modelled on DNA, and there's a secret DNA message encoded into it. But if, back in England, about 10 years ago, the most popular exhibit that ever went into the Tate Gallery was a massive slide. So we're teaching some science, but we're hoping it will become something that everyone wants to do. So the whole focus of the new, the new approach to, well, it's actually called Tuhura, the Otago Community Trust Science Centre, that's what it will be called when it opens, the whole approach is focused on really teaching science in a fun and engaging way. And it links together for the first time the tropical forest with the science. So instead of having two slightly different areas, they're fully integrated, and it's all about the science that we can teach. So as you can tell, I'm quite excited by it.
Are you also excited about the two neutron stars colliding, not just showing us how gold was made, but that they are the first evidence outside of black holes colliding of gravitational waves?
Yes, and that's, I am on a, because I do media sometimes, I'm on a press release list, and I, when I woke up this morning, I had 50 emails from universes all over the world about the science of this thing. So it's a really big, this is a really big story for astronomers.
Is the really big story gravitational waves or is it gold?
Well, no, actually, the big story is for the very first time astronomers have observed using telescopes the flash of light from colliding neutron stars. And the space telescope where I used to work have actually managed to take spectra of it, and they've shown that gold has appeared. So it's, I mean, we've known that this is how the universe works, but this is the very first time we've been able to do science on it. Sorry, I really didn't intend to do an astronomy lecture today, but it's kind of, it's kind of a fun thing.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you councillor Alder.
You sound like you're a child in a playground. I'm just asking some questions about education in the classroom. In particular, I see you went to the Chatham's, which was very successful. I was just wondering what your plans are for getting to, say, Queenstown, Central Otago and Southland and Baalclutha, and just round out the Otago region?
Well, we specifically focus our outreach efforts on the councils that fund us, and some of the other stuff that we do, like the Chatham's, it's not just because we fancy a trip to the Chatham's, but we put in a proposal for grant funding, and that trip was funded by the Ministry of Business Innovation and Employment, and they funded it because they see the skills that we have at the museum in terms of outreach was something that, I mean, those kids in the Chatham Islands don't get much, to be completely honest. And on Pitt Island, where there's a school with just nine pupils, you know, they'd never seen anything like the science stuff that we did. So our focus is the councils that fund us, and that's why by and large, the majority of the outreach that we do is to schools in Waitaki, Clutha and Central. And I understand there may be some potential funding in future from Queenstown, but until that appears, we feel the best thing to do is serve the ratepayers of the cities, sorry, of the council regions that fund us, because we want the ratepayers there to understand that we think we're trying to offer value.
Yes.
But having said that, we wouldn't necessarily exclude a school if they had a really compelling reason for us to go. And we do sometimes go to Southland and Canterbury, and often that's in partnership with the University of Otago, who have specific reasons for going to those areas. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Yes.
Councillor Gary.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you for your unbridled enthusiasm, and as always, I've got two questions. I just wanted to explore more the Chatham's trip, I did read with great interest about that, and I'd love to hear, I wonder if you'd tell us a little bit more about that trip and the response you got and so forth.
Yeah, we've got now, I think, possibly the biggest team of science outreach people in the country at our museum, we've got about 10 people working in that area, and that's all externally funded. So that's not actually funded by the ratepayers, it's funded by grants and money that we get from outside. And those people are very excited, and they keep applying for, well, to sustain the group, they apply for funding. And the extreme science to the Chatham's was an idea that they came up with after a meeting, someone bumped into a teacher from the Chatham Islands at a conference, and they said, why don't you do this stuff with us? And we thought, well, why not put in a grant? And we got funding from not only the Ministry of Business Innovation and Employment, but something called the Dodwall Centre for Research Excellence at the University of Otago, who really do physics. And they said, yeah, we'll put together a team, we'll fund a team of science outreach people. So although I went, I did the astronomy component, we had Amadeo, who is our fantastic science communicator, and Natalie, and Professor Hutchinson. So we had a combination of scientific lectures in the pub in the Chatham's with, we went to every, all three of the schools, and we did presentations in the schools. We actually took a planetarium to Pitt Island School, so we had to get in a fishing boat and go across for an hour and set it up. And so we wanted to create an experience that actually would be memorable and would give those kids an opportunity that they wouldn't necessarily always have. And also to make sure that there's a lasting relationship, it's not just us kind of going there and running away. Part of the funding was to bring a teacher from the Chatham's to the museum and work with our education team to try and do some professional development so that they can go back and then take those lessons to the schoolkids for long term.
So through the chair, was this the first time that these three schools had had an outreach arrive there?
To, in such, the way we did it, yes. I mean, the Chatham's does get visits from doc and, you know, travelling experts, and they kind of go in an ad hoc way. But I believe this was the first time a whole team of outreach people went there with a specific aim of trying to take science to the masses there. Although there's only 600 islanders, so it's not really a mass, but.
Fantastic, and I had a second question, which was around page 25 of your report, and the visitor statistics. Do you have a further breakdown of visitors from out of Dunedin and locals?
Yeah, in terms of most, and it varies according to the time of year. During the winter season, we tend to get more locals, during the summer season, we tend to get more tourists, on balance. So on average, over the course of the year, the breakdown is roughly 60/40. So 60% from local, 40% from elsewhere. But it does vary, so in the summer, it's probably closer to 50/50.
Thank you.
But we do keep monthly breakdowns of that.
Thank you.
It may say something about the local hospitality, but the Chatham Islands never has trouble attracting visitors, whether they be senior bureaucrats or cabinet ministers. Councillor Wiley.
Thank you. Dr Griffin, you actually had a very active period right across in the museum as well over the, during this report. When I read it, I see how engaged you were with the Cadbury Carnival, can you just expand upon that?
Yes, we've always done something around the period of the carnival, because it's a big boost for the city, and what we tend to do is chocolate-themed activities. So I mean, I think we mentioned in the report, we had a little interactive exhibit that we built that rolled the chocolate balls down and that kind of thing. And the observation is it seems to be something that's good for the city, and it's certainly a period when there's a visitor number bump at our museum, and particularly a bump around, you know, the families. So it's certainly a positive thing, and we work to support it. And like we do with the other festivals, like at Mataki, we do stuff at the museum. And I think it's really important that we as an institution reflect what's going on in the broader city, and try where we can to kind of align our activities with other things that the city thinks strategically important.
So it's a strong part of the July school holiday programme?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. You touched on it earlier about going to communities or where councils actually fund you, and there was an article in the OTT a month or six weeks ago about Clutha, and that, can you just elaborate a bit more about that?
Yes, well, stepping right back, I mean, as I kind of alluded to in the first page of the report, the museum's creating a long-term plan, a master plan. Over the last five years, I've been direct to five years in May, what we've tried to do is invest initially at least in the things that are going to keep us going as a museum and sustainable, and that's at the moment the income generating side of the museum. So things like the planetarium, Discovery World, Tropical Forest, all of those things bring in a lot of money that offset the running costs. I mean, you're all aware that we get about $4 million of public money from the ratepayers, mostly from Dunedin but from the other funding councils. We sort of match that with the income that we generate, and that allows us to do all these things. But going forwards, we've got enough reserves at the museum to fund the redevelopment of Tangatafenoa, which is a very important gallery for us. But beyond that, we've got about seven other galleries, many of which haven't been touched in about 20 years, between 20 years and five years. So we've got to redo those galleries over the next 10 years. So we're putting together a plan. And to come back to your point, as part of that, we know all of the councils are doing long-term planning processes at the moment. So I myself and along with a board member, either Graham Crombie or Kate Wilson, have been visiting the councils and basically showing what the museum's doing, hoping that they see some value and talking about the future of the museum. Unfortunately, Clutha Council feel that the present funding model that's used in the agreement between the different councils is unfair to the ratepayers of, sorry, that's really embarrassing. Shut up. That's my wife, sorry. Forgive me, sorry, I thought I turned it off. I'm in trouble anyway. The Clutha Council, we get 3.9 million from Dunedin City Council, Clutha give us, well, last year they gave us roughly 180,000. Waitaki were about 50,000, and Central are about $25,000. So Clutha feel very strongly that their contribution is out of proportion to the size of their ratepayer base, and understandably, they're not very happy. So despite the fact that when we made a presentation to the council, they said, we like your museum, we like what you're doing, subsequent to the presentation, they said, well, basically, we don't think this is fair, and we're going to pull back to the Act of Parliament funding agreement. I think while that doesn't necessarily affect directly the funding of the museum, because under that same act, whatever they don't pay has to be picked up by the other councils.
By Dunedin only?
By Dunedin only, forgive me, sorry, I didn't see you. So that creates obviously tension at the funding level. I mean, what I try to do as director is show that we're offering value to the ratepayers of all the districts that fund us, and in terms of the outlying districts like Clutha, Waitaki and Central, it's about the outreach support that we've offered. So we've upped our game there, we do more museum support, our conservators go out and give them 40 hours free conservation support, the science team are doing outreach in those areas. But of course, the Clutha people are sitting there saying, well, we've got 200, well roughly 180,000 dollars going, and it doesn't seem fair. So I've got some sympathy for their position, but from a museum perspective, I don't know what I can do to change it, and it's a political thing, I think. And maybe, I think, my understanding is that the mayoral forum has been discussing this, so I defer to the mayor on this, he probably knows more than I do.
Well, I defer to the chief executive, the mayor of the forum in which this was discussed, I wasn't president at the time, but the chief executive was.
There was, there'd been quite a lot of work done, put in by Dunedin City Council, by Simon and his team. Sorry?
Yeah, quite a bit of work had gone in the last year by Simon and his team, by us here at Dunedin City Council. Clutha have for quite some time not been paying the amount in the previous heads of agreement because it did, they felt it was a fear, it was not fair. And so they reverted, and that amount was about 210,000, and they reverted to paying the amount that was in the original Act of Parliament, which was, oh no, actually, they just felt it was unfair, and they paid about 180,000, so about 30,000 less, and we, DCC, picked up the difference. We have been trying to get a new heads of agreement pulled together, because that meant that all of the other councils except Clutha signed the heads of agreement and paid, and then Clutha paid the 180,000, they're bound by law to pay 127. We spent quite a lot of time and effort, a number of legal opinions, trying to come up with an arrangement that everybody, that all the councils felt fear, was fear, and some of the councils that were paying less, and Central Otago and Waitaki certainly paid considerably less than Clutha. Obviously, not many, not many councils were willing to have an increase, but one of the anomalies of the Act was that Queenstown Lakes District Council was simply never included in the first place as a contributor to the Otago Museum. So Queenstown Lakes have now said that they want to be a party. They've been getting some fantastic outreach in Queenstown by Ian and his colleagues, and have really realised that they would rather be part of that than not. And so they are paying on a per capita basis, and we tried to come up with a formula that seemed reasonable on, to take into account both per capita and the distance travelled. DCC has always paid vastly the Lions' share, largely because it's here in the city, we have more residents, and also people who are travelling into the city bring economic benefit into the city with them when they come and stay and visit. However, although the mayor at, of Clutha was really clear in the mayoral forum that he was comfortable with the position that we reached, which reduce, which basically made, suggested that Queenstown start paying and reduce the Clutha district official amount to the amount that they've been paying. So that seemed like pretty good all round, and no one else has changed. When that got to Clutha Council, they, they didn't, they decided they didn't like it. And they have said they are now going to pay just the amount that is, that is provided for in the Act. So when you add in the amount that Queenstown, Queenstown, we are hopeful will remain in the heads of agreement, and the other councils have all indicated they're going to sign. So Queenstown will begin to pay, Clutha will reduce by roughly twice what Queenstown is paying, and Dunedin is compelled to pick up the difference. It's about $30,000. There's, there's no doubt we get, you know, we get a good service from Ian and his team, and the Act is set out that way, so.
Thank you, Dr Bidros. Any further questions? Move councillor Lord, seconded councillor Wiley. Any discussion? I'll put it, those in favour? Those against? That is carried. Thank you, Dr Griffin. Appreciate that. Item seven, community and culture non-financial activity report for the quarter ended 30 September 2017. Mr Hawke, Mr Pinfold, welcome. We're all yours if you want to make any opening comments.
We're happy to answer questions from the report, but I will take the report as read by councillors.
That's fine. Questions? Councillor Vandivis.
Just looking at the graph of Alveston usage on page, bottom of page 45, obviously, winter's a difficult time when you've got beautiful gardens that aren't at their best and the tree season isn't happening, et cetera. But I'm wondering, have you looked at the possibility, I know that I've been to a couple of wonderful recitals there, even though I've really nice recording there, whether more could be done in winter in the way of winter recitals, small conferences, or perhaps even masterclasses? I mean, it's a wonderful facility, it's as beautiful a place as anyone's ever going to get. And if you've got the staff and the building there anyway, is there any way that we could boost those quite low, what is it, June to September numbers?
Through the chair, councillor Vandivis is exactly right, and that is certainly something that we are exploring, is the opportunities, particularly during winter and the shoulder seasons, to have those sorts of cultural events, meetings, and already, as you've referred, there's anything from yoga classes to life drawing to soirees and so forth that are already being held at the, at the house, but we will constantly look for opportunities to expand that.
Great. You just mentioned yoga classes, I hadn't even thought of that. I know my wife's quite keen, are they on the website for Alveston, or where do you find these things out?
They should be, councillor Staines is on the committee, as is councillor Gary, and acknowledging that.
Great, thank you very much.
Further questions? I have, oh, councillor Gary?
On page 47 of the report, item number 35, it's talking about grant applications, and it says staff have been supporting groups through this process, it's new and just posed challenges for some applicants, and acknowledging that applying for grants is a special skill. Can I just ask that, do you expand what kind of support has been given to groups?
Perhaps Joy Guns here can perhaps provide some more detail. I mean, just in brief, it's really just talking people through, through the application process, but Joy might have more to add to that.
I'll kneel, shall I? I don't know. Basically, we've gone to online only. That has caused a few problems for people who are used to a hard copy. So we've had some people not understand what an online form is, so we've been taking people through that step by step, and the staff have been working individually with people to support them to do that, both through face-to-face meetings and over the phone. And we did have a few IT glitches in moving to online only, which we are ironing out with the web team, but that did cause us a few hiccups on this first round of online only. So we're hoping that those will be resolved next time, and we'll continue to support people who are not used to doing online applications, and give them both face-to-face support, email and over the phone support. Thank you.
Councillor O'Malley.
Point 22, the South Dunedin community pop-up. Are we going to be tracking the use of that pop-up facility? And also the things inside the facility, have they been used as we go towards designing, permanent thing like that?
Through the chair, we're definitely tracking that usage on a monthly basis. In the first month, or short month, from the 8th to the 30th of September, we had a bit over 3,500 people through the door. We lent 500 items in that, in that sort of effectively three-week period, and we had, I think, just from memory, over 130, 140 information inquiries. And since that time, the usage staff report to me has continued to grow, and we're also getting other community groups and even council departments who are seeing the opportunity that the pop-up presents to promote a particular service. For example, social housing, people will be having a presence on a regular basis to promote that, that particular aspect, and we are getting a good take-up on the community hotdesk, which was an idea essentially we're trialling at that facility, so.
Just further to that, if I may, the, the figures provided in the report are around visitation, and there's commentary around how that they're tracking down in line with a decline in borrowings, for want of a better word. But is that something that, do you think that that's the most meaningful dataset, visitation, as opposed to, I'm just trying to get a sense of what the most useful information is out of those?
Through the chair, there's, there's quite a range of matrices we can use to evaluate performance, and I guess typically borrowing and visitation have been amongst those. But what I haven't reported here, but we will also be tracking, is usage of the wifi and that type of. of the wifi and, and that type of, that type of activity, and figures that we're not personally collecting, but, but would be useful as well, would be the use of particular services, such as the, the access to the JP service, I've spoken to the group that's coordinating that, and there's a JP service available from the pop-up every Tuesday, 11 till 1, and that while initially the take-up has been slow, that, that is improving, and we're looking at ways to promote that. So it's sort of quite, it's a complex and quite broad area, but if there's any particular aspects of usage that the council had an, an interest in, we could certainly focus in on, on that in greater detail.
Thank you, and, and just, I'm, I'm assuming that these are figures for all of our libraries, the visitation numbers, rather than just the central library?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, so it would be, it might be helpful to get a breakdown of those numbers for the quarter too, just in terms of seeing how things are going in the outlying branches. Councillor Elder?
Hi, Bernie, I'm just, about the South Dunedin pop-up, just the outreach that's going on to encourage people to come in, who have you reached out to and, and what kind of responses you've been getting?
Through the chair, we've, we've certainly arranging for a leaflet distribution to, to promote the, the access to the site, we have had people sort of just randomly coming in and not being quite sure what, what to expect, and, and then discovering that, in fact, it is a, multiple services, and, and that people in fact don't need to come into town to, to access service centre facilities or to access internet and things like that. So initially, we've just been doing word of mouth, we've been doing the leaflet, we will be looking at a, a feature in the, associated with the South Dunedin Street Festival on the 4th of November to promote the availability of the hub, and it will actually be open from 10 till 12 on the, the day of the street festival, so I'll be personally on the, on the table, and be promoting that people just pop down the road and have a look during that time, as will other staff, I'm sure.
So have you done a leaflet drop in the, in that whole area to letterboxes or whatever?
We, we produced, we, we did an initial run of 2,000 brochures, and they, the intention was that a person who is working in that, across that area will distribute those leaflets for us, and we'll just check whether that is sufficient, or whether we need to redo that and do another 2,000 and try other areas, so we're just sort of gently trying to, to promote the availability.
Thank you.
Can I, can we just add to that, to say that, that word's already getting out, and we've had requests from a number of groups to use the facility, and the next meeting of the South Dunedin State Holder Group, they're, they're holding their next meeting there, so the word's already out in the community.
That's excellent, thank you.
Any further questions? Somebody like to move the report? Move councillor Benson Pope, seconded councillor Elder, any discussion? Councillor O'Malley?
Actually, just a quick comment to follow up with the community pop-up, is that we, we sometimes refer to it as a library, and I think that we've known it's moved well beyond that now at this point, so I'm sure you're doing it, but it'd be nice to make sure you capture all the metrics as we go forward. Thanks.
All those in favour? Those against? That is carried. Thank you. Item number eight, Arataoi and City of Literature update, January through June 2017. Welcome back.
Again, we'll take the report as read, and but happy to expand on any, any items in the report, and particularly the attachment that the council may wish more information on.
Excellent. Questions? Councillor Gary?
Thank you. Mr. Hawke, could you just tell us a little more about the very exciting development of a strategic plan for the Dunedin City of Literature that is under development? Have you got any other comments to make on that? Because obviously that is a very exciting step forward.
Through the chair, the, the development of a strategic plan was certainly something that we identified, there was a need for some time ago, it, it has taken a little bit of a backseat this year, because we've had two very labour-intensive activities that have been taking place this year, the first one was Dunedin's involvement in the Bologna Children's Book Festival, and that was a highly successful event, which, which brought interest from publishers not only across New Zealand but Australia as well, and has provided a profile for New Zealand and particularly Dunedin authors to, to, to sort of be, be more visible in the, the world community. So certainly our director, Nikki Page, spent many weeks working and preparing for that, and, and during that time, the strategic plan took a backseat, and, and once that, that process was completed, the, the work for the upcoming Creative Cities Southern Hui very quickly replaced it, so council would be aware that between the 29th of November and the 2nd of December this year, we've got a four-day Creative Cities Extravaganza, really, where the first day is the Centre for the Books Symposium, which has already been happening in previous years, but is packaged as part of this four-day event, the, the next two days are the UNESCO Creative Cities Hui, and then on the Saturday is the Arataoi Hui to reflect on achievements in Arataoi and to consider forward directions. So there's been quite a, a lot of work been going into the development of the, the programme and all the arrangements around it, so I'm sorry, the, the strategic plan has taken second billing to those, but has by no means been forgotten, so we will, we will continue to work on that.
Thank you, and I had a subsequent question, and that was around on page 62, you talk about the Bologna Book Fair, which we've heard about, which was very exciting, I just wondered, were the donating authors given feedback about how successful that was? Because I know there were a lot of local authors who donated books, and it seemed that that would be wonderful feedback for them and very exciting.
Through the chair, I, I believe that that was the case, but I, I, without speaking to Nikki, I, I wouldn't like to say 100% that, that everyone has, has received that feedback, but I believe that it has been the case.
Councillor Vandevos?
Pardon me, page 59 talks about Artake, and a, a project designed to increase audience numbers, and says that it's been very highly successful, modelled on the Auckland model. Can you give me a wee bit of detail? I'm very interested to know how you propose to go about increasing audience numbers, it's quite often a tricky thing to do. What was the Auckland model, and, and how do, how do you intend to integrate it into the Fringe in 2018?
Councillor Vandevos, thank you for that question, I might look to Joy, if she's still here. No, okay. It's a, it's a programme offered through the economic development, so Anthony Deaker has been primarily involved with that, can I undertake to get some information from, and a bit more information and to feed that back to?
Yeah, no, it would be lovely just to see what, what the Auckland model was, and it might be, you know, if it, if it really has been as successful as it says here, it might be useful for other areas of council operations as well. Thank you.
I, I can't speak to the success or otherwise, but the model was roughly, it's set up by a woman in Auckland, and she gets artists to sell cheap work, basically, you know, under $500, and they set it up in a bar, and the DJ's playing and artists are present, and the idea is just trying to make work more accessible and affordable, and trying to develop markets for artists, early-career artists and mid-career artists in an environment outside of the white wall of the gallery space, that's loosely the, and they did a pilot here at the start of this year in March.
So it's very much just visual arts then?
Yeah, it's focused around visual arts, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No further, oh, I have a question. Have you had any official communication with the mayor of Wellington City apropos of their overtures towards UNESCO City of Literature designation status?
In a word, no, no, no contact at all from Wellington on that, that proposal.
But you're aware of the sentiment?
My only awareness was through the, through the media.
Thank you.
Councillor Elder?
Just, anything could happen, exhibition of Dunedin art and fashion in Shanghai in May, I was just wondering what kind of opportunities came out of that, did artists, you know, get more work commissioned, you know, is there any sort of tangible kind of results out of it?
Through the chair, again, this is, the detail, unfortunately, I don't have with me, it is an enterprise Dunedin programme, but again, I'm happy to follow up and get a bit more, Sue has some.
I only have, there was one artist that we particularly, a Dunedin guy who spends time in Australia and time in Shanghai, that we particularly got involved, and he sent me a note on WeChat, which I only really use to correspond with him, and he said that it had been fantastic for him, and he had three shows coming on stream as a result of that, so he was pretty excited, and he thought it had been good, so we only have, we don't collect that data, we don't ask them to tell us, so we only have what they informally feedback, but they, they did get a lot of foot traffic, and so, so the exhibition was judged by the garden to be successful, and, and they have raised the possibility of having other Dunedin and New Zealand things there as well.
Thank you.
Anything further? Someone, someone want to move, move councillor Lord, seconded councillor Gary, any discussion?
I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the staff involved for delivering this work, I think the report shows that we're getting a tremendous amount of output for what is a fairly marginal investment on council's part, through both, particularly in the City of Literature work, but also in, in the delivery of, of the Arataoi work, so I'd like to pass on my thanks to your team, Bernie and to Nikki Page, for the stuff that they've done, and I think particularly given the overtures that are being made by a capital city, it's behoven on us to make the most of our City of Literature status while we remain the only UNESCO creative city in the country, and I'll let people ruminate on that as we head into discussions around our 10-year budgets. With that, I'll put it, all those in favour? Those against? That's carried, thank you.
Part B items. Mr. McCracken?
This is the Public Art Framework 2017 to 2022, one of the initial actions of Arataoi or supporting our creative future, any opening remarks, if there's anything left to be said?
Possibly, although the report is fairly straightforward, hopefully quite open and shut, but just to, just to speak to it a little bit, this is obviously the, the report back for the public engagement process, this has been a, a, a project that has been worked on by council staff for quite a long time now, so we, we're in the back straight, if not at the finish line, in terms of the, in terms of the strategy work. So we've taken, we've taken the documentation out to public consultation, that happened between June and August, and we've also completed a people's panel in that timeframe, we got good response to both of those, both of those surveys, 112 people took part in the, in the public survey, and 132 as part of the people's panel. We asked people about the vision for public art as we saw it, and some detailed questions about the action plan identified in the framework, and I've appended those reports from those surveys as part of the documentation you've got in front of you, so you can see the detailed responses that people made, as well as get a sense of the commentary that was attached to those responses. But in short, the feedback has been predominantly positive and very supportive of the way that we want to move forward and make progress with a new public art programme, so that's, that's the outcome of the feedback, I'm really happy to, to respond to questions.
Questions, councillors? Councillor Gary?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, I was interested, I was present when you made a presentation to a community board, and I wondered what the engagement in community board areas was like on this?
I'd have to check the data, are you asking me?
Just from memory.
Oh, the, the responses from the various, well, I probably caught up with a few of you around those community boards, they were really, they were really positive, you know, people had, I guess aspirations for public art in their own communities, which was, which was great, and, and, yeah, suggestions about particular artworks that they'd like to see, artists that we might use, but predominantly the conversations were productive, fruitful and, and positive.
Further questions? Councillor Elder?
It's a fantastic strategy, and, and its time has come, looking at Melbourne, Wellington, New Plymouth and Auckland. I was just wondering, just asking about the ongoing community input, because you've got the creative group, and looking at Auckland, Wellington, New Plymouth, Melbourne, they have kind of like a working group, including, say, someone who's really good at sculpt, you know, a public figure that's really good at, an expert in sculpture, someone like, someone from the Polytech and the university in those areas, and I was just wondering whether it's worthwhile having a, like, a bit like the, the steering group for social wellbeing, having a bit of a steering group that's got a specific emphasis on that, especially as we're work going forward and developing the Centre City Plan and tertiary precinct and all those kind of things going in to the future, or do you think that's covered?
That's not, that's not something that we identified, you know, through the drafting of, of the documentation, nor the initial kind of consultation, nor this consultation. I think for me, having, having the two things that you've talked about, I guess expert participation in this process is really key, and, and the, the feeling, or the, the way that we're wanting to move forward is actually using in-house expertise, we've got a lot of in-house expertise in this organisation, in terms of, you know, putting up structures, in terms of art expertise, you know, consenting, you know, all of the things that are going to trip you up in a public art commission, we've actually got in abundance in, in this organisation. The second thing that I think is really, you know, that you've raised is community input, so one of the key tenets of, of this framework is actually doing what we're doing in a really public and transparent way, using the public art model, public lab model, sorry, whereby we actually test ideas for sites, and, and, you know, particular works in, in a, in a public setting, in a community setting, so that would look like, you know, a potentially a space at the art gallery, or a space in the Fringe office by the bus stop, where people can stop and, you know, waiting for a bus, or in a public library, you know, a MRI, anywhere where we can actually go into the community and, and have a designated space to, you know, to put up some drawings, to put up some plans, to put up some, some ideas, and solicit some feedback, you know, like I said, investigate and test those ideas. So in terms of, in terms of, you know, taking the public along with us, you know, I'd like to think that, that what we've, what we've put forward certainly does that.
The other question was, we have groups that are passionate about public art, and, you know, we've got, would they have the opportunity to still kind of like fundraise or have a specific, particular project and bring it to you, so that, that could be driven from the community as well? I'm, I'm looking at that.
The framework, the framework, you know, captures what might, that, that would be a gift, wouldn't it, I think?
Yes.
You know, it does capture a process to make some evaluations about the appropriateness, you know, the site readiness, the- you know, the site readiness, the health and safety, you know, whatever, around a gift. So absolutely, that is, you know, a possibility, welcomed, encouraged, possible under the framework, so.
Yes, because it's looking like a very successful model out there that's working like with Dunedin street art and other projects that have come to the fore, yeah.
So, I mean, the framework is, the scope of the framework is around, is around public property, public land, you know, so if someone wants to do, the street art is a little different in that it's on, you know, it's on mostly predominantly private buildings, but, you know, if someone wants to do something on their land, you know, we'll power to them. But this is around, you know, public, you know, public ownership, and it's also, it's also sculpture that the council would eventually own, and have to ensure and to maintain, and all of those things that come along with ownership. So, you know, so we do want to have a robust process around, around that gifting process, or around working with other agencies who might want to fundraise, which is great, but we want to be really sure about what it is that we're taking into, into, into ownership for the council.
Thank you for those answers, Ken.
Councillor Benson Pope?
Are you looking for an amended motion?
Um.
Well, I'm happy to move, the committee recommend to council that it approves and adopts the public art framework.
That's fine, and noted. I do have a couple of questions. Is anyone, I'll come back to that though. Anyone else? Just me? Mr McCracken, there are a couple of comments in the verbatim feedback and around the role of mana finua input into programming this work, and the response seems, the response in the Maori impact statement that they'll be, mana finua will be consulted where appropriate, I'm paraphrasing, and that that feedback will be provided through the Roonaka representation on the Creative Dunedin partnership, and that there are two representatives on that group. So how do you see those group, is the commissioning group going to the CDP group for approval for their programme? I'm just trying to understand how that gives weight to the concerns, or mitigates the concerns that were raised.
I mean, we do have, you know, we have a bureaucratic process that we can follow, which is probably articulated, you know, in the report. I'd probably comment that each, each work is going to be, is going to have its own idiosyncrasies, and some works might require, or will require, a lot more mana finua input than that. What we haven't done, this is a, this is a broad, a broad framework, and it allows us to kind of push in different areas if we need to, if we need more consultation, if we need, you know, whatever. So, you know, I would imagine that, that, you know, wahitapu, or works that have a, that have a significant, you know, naitahu or Maori component, would require, would require us to, to work with mana finua on what that process might look like.
I guess the difference, as I see it, is that one is trying to get the right permissions and protocols, and one would be having a, having input into the commissioning of the works or the programming of the works in general.
Well, yeah, that might look, that might look like, you know, working closely with the, with the Roonaka or Iwi group, you know, depending on that commission. If that's, I mean, part of the, part of the process from the get-go will be, as I see it, will be to approach this really strategically, and put together a, you know, a five, 10, maybe 15-year plan for commissioning, which might involve five artworks, which will do different things and meet different community needs, and, you know, one of those is going to be around celebrating our naitahu heritage, you know, so the process, the process for that particular work will necessarily be different to, you know, potentially to the others. I mean, we haven't been prescriptive in, in, like I said, in a bureaucratic process to cover off how, you know, A, B, C, D, you know, these steps. We'll be guided definitely by the CDP, and we'll be guided by the, the process that the community kind of lays out for us. We'll be working really closely with naitahu on the programme.
And just finally, while, I mean, there are specific groups mentioned in terms of the DCC officers that are involved in this process, that will be flexible to allow different staff?
I think it has to be. You know, some projects are going to be really easy, and they'll be, they'll be quite simple, and some are going to be much more, you would imagine, are going to be much more complex. And so that core group is going to have to add and bolster its numbers with the expertise that it needs.
Great, thank you. No further questions? An amended recommendation moved by councillor Benson Pope, I'm happy to second that. Would you like to speak to your question? Any discussion? We're all comfortable with that? Okay. Amendment? I'll put it. All those in favour?
Aye.
Those against? That is carried. Thank you. For the second to last time, hopefully. Item number 10, New Zealand Masters Games operational and financial status.
Welcome, Ms Gunn, Ms Castilla. Noting councillor Newall is withdrawing from this item. Thank you. Your opening, any opening comments you wish to make?
I think we take it as the report is read, and we're open to any questions that councillors may have.
Thank you. Questions? Councillor Lord?
I was just a wee bit intrigued to see that there's only 351 people so far registered, and you said that's certainly on par or above other years, so you expect a real increase just to come in? Is it a people?
They wait. They wait. And when I left the office this afternoon, we had 700 entries, and that's 58 above where we were the last Games 2016. Our early bird closes 30th of November, and that's when most of our entries come in, and we get a really good idea of where we're sitting.
So the difference between, was it 351 it said in the report, or did I read that wrong? So now the 758, that's just obviously?
Just from when the report was written to today.
Yep, that's amazing.
Councillor Wiley?
Thank you. Just following up on that same question, have you, are you tracking how much out of town versus local registrations?
So we're sitting about half and half at the moment, which is where we generally sit for most Games years. One thing that we have noticed, this is an increase in Auckland competitors, and we really do think that reflects on having the World Masters Games in Auckland, and it's raised the profile of Masters events.
Okay. And I've heard across the airwaves, a lot of sort of media or advertising for the Krasich Casino Golden Oldies Sports in April. It looks like they've sort of tried to hijack the Masters Games concept.
To a certain extent, it is a different type of event. So the Masters, the Golden Oldies is run by a travel agency, and it's a, it's a package deal that people have to buy. So a lot of our local New Zealand netball, it's really based, aimed at overseas competitors, like our netball teams and our football teams and that. It's quite expensive for them to enter, they, it's around $2,000 a package per entrant. So they do really aim for those overseas competitors with a few New Zealand ones and that. So our netball numbers are actually tracking ahead of where we were this time last year, so we're hoping it's a positive sign.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? Anyone like to move the recommendations? Amended as per the screen? Moved by councillor Wiley, thank you. Seconded councillor Elder. Any discussion? There being none, I'll put it. All those in favour? Aye. Those against? That is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11, the Dunedin brackets, New Zealand closed brackets, Masters Games Trust CCO exemption. Councillor Newall's still withdrawing. Councillor Benson Pope?
No, I don't have a question, but I'm happy to move.
Thank you. Thank you. The only question I has have is, can the exemptions, are the exemptions not able to be made enduring? Maybe not in perpetuity, but more often than this.
Part of the Local Government Act is it has to be reviewed every three years.
Fine.
Good idea, though.
Moved councillor Benson Pope. Seconded councillor Lord. Sorry, any further questions? No? Any discussion? I'll put it. All those in favour?
Aye.
Those against? That is carried. Thank you. Item 12 is items for consideration by the chairperson. Anything that people want to raise at this point? Councillor Vandivers?
I'm just wondering if we could get an update on where the Mozgul pool has progressed to so far. It seems to me to have been going on for quite a long time now, and if it goes on for too long, I wonder whether the private funding that might be available there might get a wee bit tired of the process. So if it's possible just to perhaps give us an update, either on email or at the next meeting, on where that's going, and if we have a timeline for it.
Yeah, that's fine, I can defer that to the infrastructure staff, who'll be able to respond to that in due course. Unfortunately, there was no one here to answer those questions at the meeting yesterday.
Sorry, but it's definitely an infrastructure rather than a community issue?
It sits with parks and recreation as a group, but I can forward that on, that's fine.
Thank you.
Anything, anything else?
No.
Okay, as per the order paper, I'll move that the public moves into non-public for the consideration of the final item on our agenda. Seconded councillor Elder. All those in favour?
Aye.
Those against? That is carried. Thank you.